Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Committee for the Whole/Finance Committee Meeting for Wadsworth City Council for Tuesday, September 17th. Time is six o'clock PM. First thing on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Rosberg?
Here.
Williams? Urichak?
Here.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from our, what was the date of? September 3rd meeting? If so, entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll move into draft legislation now. The first is a resolution authorizing the sale of various items of personal property by Internet auction pursuant to Resolution 2402 and declaring an emergency. We did discuss this in service last night, so I asked Mike Testa, are you going to address this?
Yep, we have the auction of items, basically rolling stock and mechanical parts that are typically under the repair/maintenance responsibility for our motor equipment division. And this will be the third auction of the year. Original resolution was passed back in January, had an auction of rolling stock, you may remember, a couple of months ago. We had a separate auction where the electric department auctioned off different pieces, parts of electrical gear, and this is just the continuation of a second auction for the rolling stock items this year.
Any questions from council? If not, I'll ask Mr. Parrish to take care of this. Could you give us a number, please, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. That'll be ordinance number...
Resolution number.
Resolution number 24-08.
Anyone's thoughts on going three readings or just pass it? I mean, it's up to you guys.
Three readings.
Three readings? Okay. Okay, the next thing is another resolution. It's a resolution declaring the necessity of repairing, replacing, constructing certain sidewalks in the city of Wadsworth, requiring that abutting property owners repair, replace, or construct same and declaring an emergency. Who wants to speak to that? Mr. Hiscott?
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Thank you, Mr. Copley. This item was discussed at public ways. This is a statutory requirement for our sidewalk assessment program. This allows us to put the necessary notifications in place to maximize the period of time that affected adjoining landowners might have to prepare for the expense that's involved in the sidewalk assessment. So, it's to the advantage of our citizens.
Any questions, council? If not, I'll ask Mr. Parrish to also take care of this one since he's on the Ways Committee. Could we have a number?
24-09.
And does this need to go, can it go three readings?
It can. It can.
I'll move to the second then.
Okay, next one's ordinance number, authorizing the interim director of public service to purchase a 2024 single axle snow and ice control with a nine-foot FRS salt and spreader truck equipment package from Henderson Products through participation in an MPP GOV contract and declaring an emergency. Who wants to speak to this one?
I could speak to this one also, but certainly if Mr. Ballack has anything to add, I would encourage him to do so. This was also discussed at public ways. This would allow us to purchase a body for an existing cabin chassis that we have. The total amount for this particular purchase would be $224,880. As I said, it was mentioned at public ways.
Since it's come out of ways, Ms. Heinz, could you take this?
Sure.
Is, do we need to go suspend and call so we can get it ordered?
I would ask the courts, or the court, I would ask the council's consideration on suspending and calling that, sorry, flashback from another, so, the reason being is we do anticipate some price increases, so the sooner we can place our order, the better off we will be.
Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
That ordinance number is?
24-103.
103, okay. Next thing on the agenda is an ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $218,724.55 in the 425 General Capital Improvements Fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024 and declare an emergency.
I could speak to this one also. It is adjoined with the previous item of legislation that we talked about. You might ask, why is there a difference between the purchase price amount discussed in the last ordinance and this particular supplemental? The reason being is there's about $6,000 still remaining unencumbered in our vehicle purchasing area, so we'd like to use that amount. We don't need as much in our supplemental for the purchase. So, between that amount and the request for the supplemental, that would allow us to purchase the snow and ice package.
So, what you're telling us, we have to pay for it when we order it?
Well, we have to encumber it at the time of the order. We don't necessarily pay for it at that point in time.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions of council? Ms. Heinz, will you take care of this since it corresponds with the last one?
Yes.
That'll be ordinance 24-104.
May I suspend and call that one too?
Yes.
Put the money's in place. Okay, next thing is an ordinance to provide for the issuance of a bond in anticipation of the collection of special assessments heretofore levied to pay the property owner's portion of the cost of the 2022-2023 sidewalk program.
This was another item that was discussed at public ways, and essentially this is the tail end of the statutory process for assessments where we must really consider the bond for the private property owner's portion of the expenses.
And then what we do then, then we put it on their tax bill, correct?
That's correct.
And they have, they have five years to pay for it at that point?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions?
I appreciate the list of property. Because that answered my question from the committee, so I appreciate that very much.
Does this need to be passed tonight?
It can go three readings.
It can go three readings? Okay. Could you, Mr. Parrish, since you're on public ways, take care of that?
I sure will. I'll move it to second.
Ordinance number 24-105.
And last but not least, an ordinance to amend the amount not to exceed in ordinance number 24-102 to 101, $101,712 and declare an emergency. This goes from the ordinance that we passed on September 9th, or 3rd, 3rd, I'm sorry.
It does. And again, by way of explanation, I appreciate the council's consideration on this particular matter. This would be the authorizing legislation to allow me to enter into contracts for the Boyer Street repairs that were discussed. Unfortunately, the earlier ordinance that addressed this authorization did not include the prevailing wage amounts, and so that is the cause for the increase in price and the difference between the original ordinance and this particular ordinance. We did pass a supplemental, which does not need to be addressed for this particular item, because similarly to the snow and ice package, we did have some money left over in an account that we can put towards the overall expenses, and the prior supplemental will allow us to cover the remainder of the amount. So, there's no need to adjust the supplemental ordinance.
Do we know when it's going to start though?
I believe we could start right after the signature. Many of the contractors are lined up and prepared to do the work.
Because I've, I've had a couple residents ask me how, how much longer it's going to be closed.
Yeah, yeah, they're planning on getting started.
And what's the anticipated completion date?
I'm thinking probably the water line's going to be about a week to five to seven day process. It's all going to depend on weather, number one, which, our weather's looking pretty good right now, but they have to get the line installed, then they have three days of bacteria testing and pressurizing remain to make sure that it's, it's okay to...
Partly look in a couple weeks.
So then, yeah, well, resurfacing or probably another three to four, four days. So, probably a two-week window.
Two to three weeks? Okay. I mean, just so we can tell them something.
Sure.
Whenever they ask. Okay. Mr. Parrish, since this is also coming out of...
And I'm suspending call?
Yeah, yeah, so we can get this project moving forward.
Number 24-106.
Thank you.
Okay, and that takes us to the city council agenda review. Tonight, we have an ordinance accepting approximately .0427 acres of right-of-way on College Street and vacating approximately .0474 acres of right-of-way on College Street and .0221 acres of right-of-way on Westgate Avenue as part of the plat consolidating city lots 4543, 4544, and 6757, creating Wadsworth City Lot 1,000, 10,302 and declaring an emergency. This has to do with the Salvation Army, and it's on second reading. Mr. Urichak, can you handle this one since Ms. Hanlon's not here tonight? We moved it to second last time.
I can move it to third.
Move it to third? Everyone okay with that?
And I will abstain because I'm on, probably because I'm on the board.
Just like last time.
Yep, just like last time, yep.
Yep. Okay, and the next thing on the agenda is an ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $75,000 in the 608 Electric Fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. This was discussed in public service last night, and we agreed to move it to fourth reading, so Mr. Stugmeyer, can you take care of that?
Yes, sir.
Takes us to ordinance number 24096. It's an ordinance to amend sections 5316, 9715, 150.009, 150.078, 150.081, 150.082, 153.054, 153.095, 154.540, 155.05, 155.09, 155.10, and to delete obsolete language in the sections of 9703 and 97.32 of the codified ordinance of the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency. Mr. Urichak, what's your desire?
Yeah, I'll move that to fourth. We have the public hearing set for October 15th.
Okay, next one is an ordinance to establish fees for sections 5316, 9715, 150.009, 150.08, 150.081, 150.082, 153.054, 153.095, 154.540, 155.05, 155.09, and 155.10, codified ordinance of the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency. Mr. Urichak, what's your...
Same. I'll move that to fourth.
And ordinance number 24090. An ordinance to amend sections 154510, 154511, 154512, 513, 154514, 154518, and to delete language in sections 154515, the codified ordinance of the city of Wadsworth to update chapter 154 of the zoning code section titled Repairing Zone Setbacks and Declaring an Emergency. And this is on fourth reading, and a public hearing is being scheduled for October 15th at 6:30.
I'll move it to fifth.
Move it to fifth. Everyone okay with all these?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It brings us to other business. Anyone from the administration have any other business to come in front of the committee? Council members, any other business? Not? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Good evening and welcome to the Wadsworth City Council meeting of Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. Will the meeting please come to order? Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
For the allegiance of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forth with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would please remain standing for our invocation. Almighty God who has given us this good land to be our heritage, we acknowledge our dependence on you for all things. We thank you for all your blessings, including the right and privilege that we have to govern ourselves in this free land. We pray that you will grant us all wisdom to make good decisions for the future of this community and the perseverance to do all that needs to be done. Through Christ our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Rosberg?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Williams? Urichak?
Here.
You've had the opportunity to review the minutes of the regular city council meeting of September 3rd and the special city council meeting of September 9th, 2024. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved. We'll move into our visitors section of our meeting. If anybody would like to step forward and address the council, please do so. State your name, address, and we'll give you a few minutes to speak. Seeing none, we will move on to correspondence.
We do have one notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a liquor license for Wadsworth Beverage Center located 300 South Main Street with regards to a transfer of stock. A copy of the notice was distributed to all the council members, and if council does not object, the notice will be returned to the Division of Liquor Control by the end of the week.
Mr. Hiscott?
Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President Pro Tem. I would tell you, this is a stock transfer. As Ms. Darlington has mentioned, there are no pertinent police matters in respect to this particular transfer.
Thank you. Let's move into our committee and commission updates. We'll begin with Mr. Stugmeyer, public service.
Thank you. We have two here. Our regular public service committee will next meet on Monday, October the 21st, 2024, 5:30 PM here in council chambers, and we have a special public service committee meeting on Wednesday, tomorrow, 9:18, 5:00 PM here in council chambers.
Public safety, Mr. Copley? Our next meeting on public safety will be on October 9th here in these chambers at six o'clock. Public wage, we will meet Monday, October 14th, six o'clock here in council chambers. Economic development and planning committee, Mr. Urichak?
We will next meet on October 14th, 5:00 PM here in council chambers.
And council of the whole and finance will meet next, will meet Tuesday, September 17th, which was today, at six o'clock. Airport commission, Mr. Stugmeyer?
Airport commission will next meet here in council chambers, 5:00 PM on September, Monday, September 30th.
Mr. Copley, stormwater commission? Stormwater commission will meet on the 14th, wait a minute, 10/21, October 21, at five o'clock. And Ms. Heinz, the shade tree commission?
We're going to meet here in council chambers on Tuesday, the 24th, at five o'clock.
Planning commission, who would like to take that?
Well, that'll be the next one is scheduled. It's a special time at 5:00 PM scheduled for September the 23rd, 5:00 PM here in council chambers.
Mr. Urichak, cemetery board?
Cemetery board will meet tomorrow evening at four, well, tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 PM downstairs in the city hall.
In Ms. Hanlon's absence, I will tell you, the cable TV commission will meet Thursday, October 3rd, at four o'clock here in council chambers. And Mr. Parrish, would you tell us about the senior citizens commission?
Yes, the senior citizen commission will be Monday, October 7th, at 3:30, and we're at the Suprema Senior Center.
We will now move into our reading of legislation.
All right, we will start with first readings. We have resolution number 24-08 on first reading sponsored by council member Tom Stugmeyer, discussed at public service. A resolution authorizing the sale of various items of personal property by Internet auction pursuant to Resolution 24-02 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Vice...
I'm sorry. We're going to have Mr. Stugmeyer.
I'm sorry to hear what?
Oh, I thought we had talked that it was Mr. Parrish.
It is my...
It was service.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I make a motion to move resolution number 24-08 to second reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And resolution 24 dash, oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance, no, wait, resolution. I apologize, folks. I'm still trying to get my bearings here. Resolution number 24-008 has been moved to second, or, second reading.
And then we have resolution number 24-09 on first reading sponsored by council member David Parrish and discussed at public ways. A resolution declaring the necessity of repairing, replacing, or constructing certain sidewalks in the city of Wadsworth, requiring that abutting property owners repair, replace, or construct same and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I move that we place this on second reading, this, this resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution number 2409 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-103 on first reading and sponsored by council member Jeanie Heinz and discussed at public ways. An ordinance authorizing the interim director of public service to purchase a 2024 single axle snow and ice control with nine-foot FRS salt and spreader truck equipment package from Henderson Products Incorporated through participation in a MPP GOV contract and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I move that we suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24-013.
That's 103.
103.
103. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. We will, hearing no objection to Ms. Heinz, no, no, yeah.
Do I call the roll? I'm sorry.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
We'll get it together here. Urichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
And Copley?
Yes.
Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I call the question on ordinance number 24-103.
Hearing no objection to Ms. Heinz's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take the roll, roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 24-103?
Parrish?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-103 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-104 on first reading sponsored by council member Jeanie Heinz and discussed at public ways. An ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $218,724.55 and the 425 General Capital Improvements Fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I move that we suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24-104.
Second.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes. Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I call the question on ordinance number 24-104.
Hearing no objection to Ms. Heinz's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 24-104?
Rosberg?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-104 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-105 on first reading sponsored by council member David Parrish and discussed at public ways. An ordinance to provide for the issuance of a bond in anticipation of the collection of special assessments heretofore levied to pay the property owner's portion of the cost of the 2022 and 2023 sidewalk program.
Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I move that we place ordinance number 24-105 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-105 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-106 on first reading sponsored by council member David Parrish and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend the amount not to exceed in ordinance number 24-102 to $101,712 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24-106.
Second.
Parrish?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I call the question on, on ordinance number 24-106.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Parrish's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 24-106?
Heinz?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-106 has been adopted.
And our second reading is ordinance number 24-099 sponsored by council member John Urichak and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance accepting approximately 0.0427 acres of right-of-way on College Street and vacating approximately 0.0474 acres of right-of-way on College Street and 0.0221 acres of right-of-way on Westgate Avenue as part of the plat consolidating city lots 4543, 4544, and 6757, creating Wadsworth City Lot 10302 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I move we place ordinance number 24-099 on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will abstain because I just involve the Salvation Army property. I'm on the advisory board there.
Ordinance number 24-099 has been placed on third reading.
Ordinance number 24-093 on third reading sponsored by council member Tom Stugmeyer and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $75,000 in the 608 Electric Fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I make, I move to place ordinance number 24-093 on fourth reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance number 24-093 has been placed on fourth reading.
And we do have a public hearing set for October 15th, 2024 at 6:30 for the following ordinance. Ordinance number 24-096 on third reading sponsored by council member John Urichak and discussed at economic development and planning. An ordinance to amend sections 53.16, 97.15, 150.009, 150.078, 150.801, 150.8082, 153.054, 153.095, 154.540, 155.05, 155.09, 155.10, and to delete obsolete language in sections 97.03 and 97.32 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I move we place ordinance number 24-096 on fourth reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-096 has been placed on fourth reading.
Ordinance number 24-097 on third reading sponsored by council member John Urichak and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to establish fees for sections 53.16, 97.15, 150.009, 150.078, 150.081, 150.082, 153.054, 153.095, 154.540, 155.05, 155.09, and 155.10 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I move we place ordinance number 24-097 on fourth reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-097 has been placed on fourth reading.
And we also have a public hearing set for October 15th, 2024 at 6:30 for the following ordinances, ordinance. Ordinance number 24-090 on fourth reading sponsored by council member John Urichak and discussed at economic development and planning. An ordinance to amend sections 154.510, 154.511, 154.512, 154.513, 154.514, 154.518, and to delete language in sections 154.515 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to update chapter 154 zoning code section titled Repairing Zone Setbacks and Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. Vice President Pro Tem, I move we place ordinance number 24-090 on fifth reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-090 has been placed on fifth reading. Other business, we'll start with the administration? Anybody? Counsel?
Nothing from me.
Nothing for me.